All right, I'm not sure if Mr. Davis is going to make it because I believe he is actively campaigning. And we're at 7:02, so if everybody's cool with it, I would like to bring the May 12th, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Can I have a roll call for the call to order, please?
Dave Cortez, present.
He's present.
Kevin Morris, present. And Hal Davis, not present. So I do not have, well, actually, the only announcements that I have is, as we all know, our election is running today. Mr. Davis is currently out doing the last minutes of his campaigning for his reelection. And voting hours are, we're here until 8 o'clock.
4:00.
So for those of you that didn't do an absentee ballot that may be listening, you have until 8:00 tonight. And be proud of the process. So moving past that, we'll go right into the first item on the agenda, which is to consider and vote to send a request to bargaining units to reopen contracts for negotiation and possible votes. And in our packets Suzanne had sent along draft invitation letters to the unions and feedback from Attorney Mazur and the two public safety chiefs. These letters are to ask for opening the labor contracts to discuss COLA and steps in light of the upcoming budget crunch. They were requesting that the board approve these letters and sign them by tomorrow night. And I believe Suzanne had asked that we also put a motion in that I be the signatory on these letters to the collective bargaining units. Pretty much sum that one up?
That pretty much sums it up. It's, they are in the middle of a contract that has to be honored unless they bargain not to agree some of the terms.
Impact bargain.
Impact bargain.
So I don't see any real need for, anybody have any questions or comments or thought processes on it? That's a lot of quiet.
So this is impact bargaining. This is what it's designed for when you have something unexpected like this that has an impact on the relationship between the town and the union. So we're, I think we're being responsible in doing what we should be doing.
Is anybody willing to throw a motion together to include the requests going to the bargaining units, to be open for contract negotiations, and to have me as a signatory on said letters?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
On the nine.
Dave Cortez, aye.
He was aye.
Kevin Morris, aye. Okay, the next step is to consider and vote on a capital spending freeze and possible votes. As part of the, I guess you'd call it a potential budget crunch that's coming up with uncertainty on revenue dollars and things like that. I think it would make sense for us to consider and move forward on putting a freeze on all capital spending, at least in the interim. And I think we'd want to exclude anything that's currently underway for a capital expenditure.
So we'll parse through this. To back up for a second, Mr. Chairman, both of these items, this item and the following item, are cast as policies. And while the board does have the authority to issue a policy during a time of emergency on the first reading, my request is that you do the traditional three readings. And that'll give time for FinCom and for any member of the public or anyone else who has, wants to weigh in the opportunity to do so. But from the first reading on, we'll be following, Jean and I and the department heads will be following the policy in anticipation that it in some form would be approved. There is in your packet a spreadsheet. It's marked for discussion purposes only, Town of Douglas Fiscal 20, General Fund Capital Projects. So this is all of the capital spending that has already been approved by town meeting. The funds have already been raised and appropriated, so they are allocated to these projects. And to the extent that the project either hasn't happened, it's because of some technical or other difficulty, or it's not enough money because it's so old that prices have outstripped the appropriation, or it's a new item that we haven't begun to spend yet. We should, the recommendation is we should stop those projects where they are because there may be need for these funds to be a backstop for the town financially over the next two to three years. We anticipate fully that we would still have to spend money on capital, it just might not be these items. And in the short run, the more expensive items won't happen either because of social distancing or because the economy has to recover before some of these vendors can even get the supplies they need and all the rest of it. We might just need these funds, and they shouldn't be tied up here if they're needed immediately. I'm not going to parse out this list. What the policy sets out is a process for the town administrator and department heads to go through this list and to whittle it down. The full carryforward is 1.123 million. Round up, call it 1.124. But there are a number of items here that are going to continue because we've either, Jean's not capturing the fact that some of these are on progress because she doesn't get those catch-ups. So for instance, the highway dump truck that was authorized in Article 10 a year ago, it's 198,240. She's carrying the full balance forward because she hasn't spent any of it yet. But that truck has been purchased and it is sitting in the yard at the outfitter waiting for its plow and its body to be fitted to the chassis. So it's already been bought, all the parts have been bought, and there's just a delay getting it off the yard. So that 198 is not available. And I could go on and on, this is a fairly long list. What we wanted to do is go through the list and identify those things that haven't happened yet and then sit down with the capital improvement committee and push them through their function, which is to go back through these and prioritize them. What dollars should be spent first? Clearly, those projects that have already closed and closed with a positive balance, those would be the first ones. Transferring these funds, though, requires a town meeting vote. So it's just understood, though, that your order as the board would be that we freeze the spending so that you know you have it. And then when we have the opportunity to have a town meeting, either special or an annual, those transfers, as recommended, could be made. Are there any questions? There's a lot of projects on here. I'm open to questions about the projects themselves or the policy.
The radio project is on here, right?
Yeah. The public safety radio project, and I, in a couple of selectman meetings, I've provided you with this update. When we originally specked out this project, it was the consensus amongst all the user groups in town that we needed new portable radios and new mobiles. So radios in the car and radios on individual people, for those who carry them. And for highway, it was simply upgrading from a very old system to get on the same band as police and fire, so that everybody could talk to each other all at the same time without having to do cross-band repeating and all the rest of it. But we didn't spend a dime of this money because there were some open questions about whether or not the problem with reception in town wasn't bigger than just the portable radios themselves. And as it turns out, it is. Our single tower doesn't provide adequate coverage in the outskirts of town on a reliable basis. And there is a cost-effective fix for that. We had a very accomplished consultant who has a statewide contract in three different states, including Massachusetts. He's done lots of projects in Massachusetts. Basically say, I will do the consulting part of this for free if you buy off the statewide contract, which is not a bad arrangement. And they did all the coverage tests all around town and took lines of sight and realized or recognized the fact that we need more infrastructure. We need a couple, we need to be up on a couple of towers. We don't need to build those towers, those towers are there, but we need to get up there with antennas and other equipment. And that changed the dynamic of the project. It's not a, whatever we put in here.
173,000.
It's not $173,000 anymore. It's about a $450,000 project. It will still be necessary. As of today, if it's the difference between running the ambulance at all because so much revenue's been lost, or having the perfect radio on an ambulance that's running, we'll make sure we defend the ambulance running. So when we talk about the revenue shortfall that's potentially coming out of this economic downturn, it's very substantial. So this is a project, I would say, when times are better, we can revisit the whole conversation. But right now, it's not needed as urgently as it was because the dynamics have changed. The other big one that's on here is the backup generator for this building. This building has served as the emergency operations center since March 9. And we've had some power failures and other things have occurred just because of windstorms and whatnot, and we've been able to hold out. This one can't sit forever. The generator that we have out back is pretty old. It needs a lot of maintenance. It does not power the whole building, and that's the biggest issue. It only powers critical systems. So when we lose power, we have, it's kind of spotty. And then some systems will turn on because they're on the generator, some will not because they have no power source. Some of these things are interconnected now, and so it's not convenient to have it set up this way. We're going to free up some space because of changes we've made down in the police station, but not enough for future needs. So we recognize this while we're applying for a best practices grant, and we included the generator project in the grant application. And town meeting's appropriation was posted as the match. It was a very attractive grant application, but we didn't win the grant. So we have to strip down what we're trying to get with the grant. And in the meantime, this is, again, is not an adequate sum of money to do the project as investigation determined. The old, the current generator, the proper switches weren't installed. So when we kick over, we're not protected from that jolt of power that comes through. And there's a lot of antiquated wiring in this building, in this general neighborhood between the police station and the upstairs. Best practice would be to remove that, so that's not hanging there for somebody in the future to not know whether it's live or not and all the rest of it that goes with it. So there's quite a bit of work there. It's not that short, but again, the generator as that we have today is working. And if we are in a financial crisis for the next two years, we would keep that one going with bubble gum and straws and, you know, bamboo skewers, I guess, until we get to a better spot. But right now, it's not something that I think we need in light of the other problems that we may be facing. So all told, I don't think we'll be scoring this at a million. I think we'll be scoring this at closer to half a million, 600,000. But it still is a reservoir of funds that you might be able to use.
Okay.
So if it's a first reading, I don't know technically what you do.
I think just call it a first reading.
I think you just call it a first reading.
Right, and as long as we acknowledge, I mean, that was pretty comprehensive, your explanation. It certainly qualifies as a full reading, so.
So we don't really need to take any action. It's just officially the first reading of our intended policy?
That's right.
Okay. Moving on then. We'd actually, after the third reading is when we'd initiate it into
Right.
practice, or would we want to vote saying?
You'd vote it as a policy, and then it becomes the policy of the town. It has a force of law.
Okay, so the next meeting, we'll do our second and then third.
And at your next meeting, FinCom will be
Present.
Zooming in, I guess, or Avaya-ing in?
Spaces.
Spacing in.
There you go.
Not spacing out, spacing in.
We don't use the Zoom word because the Avaya system will crash.
One question before we move on, Mr. Town Administrator. I've heard different towns talking about some of the same issues we face differently. And I know it's way too early to put anyone on the spot. When do you think we'll have a good idea of what the aid is going to look like from the state?
So that's the quadrillion-dollar question.
Right. And I realize there probably isn't an answer, but if you have any guidance at all, then I'd be interested.
This week has been what you might call non-stop, non-stop guidance.
I can see Mr. Hughes.
There you are, Mike.
He's Mike, but he's anonymous.
Can you hear me?
No, I can hear you.
No, we can hear you. You look good there.
This has been the, are we all set?
Yeah, we're good.
This has been the week where almost every state official who's got anything to say has been issuing guidance. So it's been like a circus trying to keep all the balls in the air. DLS did an extensive call, Lieutenant Governor did an extensive call today. The problem is those are executive branch people, and they're trying, you're relying upon their insight into the legislature, which may or may not be reliable stuff. You'll notice, I think that, step one for our partners in the Commonwealth is to get through Fiscal 20 with their hats on. So the governor today, in his press conference, said he's going out for a billion.
Right.
Right? So that's a, that's a really big number. He's saying that he's going out for it in anticipation of FEMA reimbursement of all of it. At least the coverage I read said that's what he said. So it's unclear what they're, what they're going to score against, like a true loss. How much of the spending and how much of their deficit this year revenue shortfall is a true loss, or is it reimbursed? Next year, the outlook is, I don't think anybody's, there is no consensus estimate. So I'm not optimistic that we'll know before the end of June what they anticipate giving us.
Okay.
And one would think that if there are any political divisions in the Commonwealth, that's between urban and suburban and rural, and wealthier communities inside 495 and the more workaday communities outside of 495, that you're going to get lots of interesting legislative formulas for how to count votes to get to a consensus budget. And those things tend to take time. So I don't know. I know there's been a lot of discussion on our listserv amongst town managers and administrators about, you know, what are your plans, what are your plans? I would say that I end up on the very conservative end of this.
That's a good place to be.
Yeah, because the folks who aren't being all that conservative, when I ask them how they arrived at their conclusions, they really don't have a good explanation. It doesn't tie back to anything that I think is a reality. God bless them all. Some towns are, they're just, everybody's in a really different place with their free cash, their stabilization, their operational efficiencies. Some towns have a long way to go, others are doing very well. So it's, it will fall upon everybody very unevenly, no matter what the legislature does. So I have no better insight than that. The only thing that Mr. Cronin said, that Sean Cronin said on the conference call that he did with small town administrators was that you should not worry about setting your tax rate. I don't know how reassuring that is, but the state will resolve its budget issues and guide the municipalities through the next steps well before we have to set a tax rate.
Seems kind of an odd thing to pick out.
Kind of an odd milestone to pick out.
Yes.
It is the milestone.
Right.
For the school year. You can't appropriate after you set the tax rate, you can only transfer. So it'll be fascinating.
Okay. So are we good to move on to item three, do we think, or?
You can. I'm trying to figure out what is the best time to talk about this one. I guess.
I mean, you've got a whole declaration here in the packet.
I'm just, we passed along to the board two bulletins from DLS, '04 and '06. '04 has to do with the use of free cash. It's very technical. It's very controversial, apparently. After it was issued, there's been some internal concerns raised about using the current year certified free cash after June 30. It would seem that the guidance indicates that that's a possibility, but the folks who actually administer this say that's crazy, it's almost impossible to do. You should close your free cash on June 30 and recertify for the next year. So it's getting a little bit, I don't know where to take that one, but this one, '06, it's almost like I don't know that the people who wrote this understood just what a sweeping order or guidance this is. The Act, Section 5, so I'm in the first paragraph, the bottom of the first paragraph on Bulletin 2020-6. Section 5 provides an option for towns and districts for expenditure without appropriation if the town or district's annual budget is delayed beyond June 30, 2020. It would seem that the author of this document believes that the authority exists for them to use to waive the requirement for town meeting to appropriate. I don't know how else to take that language, except that if a Board of Selectmen votes a month-to-month budget and it's approved by DLS, you can go ahead and deficit spend your accounts. And when you have an annual town meeting, you would backfill that with what you, what you levy and what you raise from the other sources. That is making any number of finance directors headspin all around the state because that doesn't really sound right. It still sounds like there's no formal act of appropriation. And since when does the state use its authority to appropriate funds for municipalities? So it's, I think we're at a logjam there, too, but it gives you a sense of where we are with the discussion. The other guidance that came out of this phone call and this conversation with Mr. Cronin was that COVID-19 pandemic emergency spending notwithstanding, the municipalities should have an eye towards their bond rating, not that they would get hit if they use free cash and stabilization or other sources, one-time sources to keep operations going, provided that you have a plan that has been through a transparent process and has been signed off on, and you have a plan for recovering those funds at the end, especially stabilization if you got that far, putting the money back. So even in the midst of the pandemic, you notice Grafton got a bond rating because they issued debt. And that, they held their rating. So despite their emergency spending, they held their double A-plus rating, double A-positive, I guess you'd call it. So what we've endeavored to do, Jean and I, is try to come up with a rank ordering or identification of potential sources. The first source would be cost savings, where we would go through operations and find ways to save money. And we're looking to the Board of Selectmen to provide guidance on what the target number should be. Fully aware of the fact that whatever isn't covered by cost savings would have to be covered from a revenue source other than the levy and other than state aid because state aid's what's going to be short. So free cash or unspent capital funds or other sources. The next part of the policy would be to rank order those things. So give us the outline of a plan and we'll write the plan. So what do you want to spend from first, spend from second, because we'll spend down accordingly. Jean, in her recommendation email, which I don't know that Suzanne had a chance to print out, I don't know if you see it.
It's the first item on the tab number, after tab number three in my book.
Right. She identified that there may be funds in the restricted receipts account for ambulance as well as wetland conservation. That might, there might be balances there that will also be a potential source of revenue to cover operations. So you can add them to the list. But the list is use of unspent capital funds, use of free cash, use of stabilization. For the limited purpose of funding employee health insurance, use of available assigned equity in the Massachusetts Strategic Health Group Trust Fund, which I can explain if I need to. And the one that I just mentioned, the restricted receipts accounts for the ambulance and wetland conservation.
I mean, I think the way that it's presented in this, like, it seems like a pretty viable plan. I mean, first, obviously, we want to do the cost savings. And we try and get that deficit down as low as we can. And then the hopes would be use unspent capital and then do for, like, the way it's laid out is, in my mind, picture perfect. Although I'd want to use stabilization as like dead last.
Right, so that's kind of where we are with all of this.
So I'd probably put that down like underneath F.
Do you have a minute? Because this is your moment to shine.
I'm, well, I'm sitting right here too. Hi.
Hi, Jean.
We're talking about the order of priority for sources of revenue to be spent out of.
Okay.
And your recommendation was free cash first?
Correct.
And then unspent capital?
Uh, no, my next one was looking at ambulance reserve.
Ambulance reserve.
Because that's a transfer and also wetlands. The third would be unspent capital for projects we have not started. And then I would look at, yeah, what I.
I'm looking at your email. Number four is transfer from stabilization.
Yeah, I intentionally forgot about that one.
We all do.
Yeah.
Because my thought would be putting stabilization as like dead last resort of taking money from there.
Well, that's why it's last.
Yeah, it is dead last, yeah.
So, sounds like Jean's got it nailed.
So if you're able, I don't know how long you need.
I don't think it'd be much longer. I'm writing this down.
Do you have a copy of the email? Do you want mine, Matt, or?
I've got it. I saw it.
Okay.
The one thing that Jean was uncomfortable talking about was the use of any equity that we have in the health insurance account. We've talked about this. We had an equity buy-in. In order to fund the health insurance trust fund upfront, there was an upfront, there was one quarter's worth of potential claims deposited in the account. That was a transfer from free cash to accomplish that. And we've had a very good year, and the equity limit is 8%. So we will never carry more than 8% in the trust fund without dispersing the equity back to the member groups. Because we don't want it to get so fat that people start getting tempted to give themselves zeros year after year after year and then being, getting a crash at the end. So, but there is a potential that if we had a couple of really good years in terms of health insurance claims, but we were having difficulty financially, that we would use our equity to pay our health insurance premium, and that would allow us more operating cash for the budget. So we can put that way down right before stabilization and say it's pretty much, that's option four, and stabilization would be option five.
That makes sense.
And just so people have a sense, I'm going to round up to the nearest 100,000. Free cash is still at about 1.4. Some was spent in November. The capital funds, we'd already discussed, were, our goal is to get that number to somewhere around half a million, 600,000. Stabilization is 1.4 million. There's an exact figure associated with that that I can forward to Tim or whoever it was that asked last time, but it's 1.4. So really, the town has about $3 million for extreme emergency spending if we got that far.
I would say.
I would say if we get that far, everybody's in so much trouble, nobody may care anymore.
I'm going to say another version of that. I would say that as time goes on, whatever we have as savings, we don't want to spend all in one year. There's certainly an opportunity, is definitely not the right word. There is certainly a danger that the downward economic trend could continue. And I don't think we should use all our eggs in one year. It's a horrible analogy, but use up whatever we have in reserve in one year and be left really scrambling in the second year if things are still difficult.
Right, and that's why cost savings are so important. When I first put these numbers into the budget, the revenue shortfall, I ended up with a deficit of 657,000. And the last time we met, I briefed you on the possibility of getting about 300,000 of that taken care of. I might push that up to close to 400,000. And that, if we could set that as the goal, if I could present you with $400,000 worth of options, it doesn't mean you have to take them. You may choose not to. I have a hunch you may not choose to take all of them. But if we do that, then you would be able to say no to some of them and still have enough money identified to meet your goal, so.
And if we agreed to all of them, I could put it about, based off of what we have cash-wise now, if we maintained a 400,000 now, if we maintained a $400,000 deficit based off of our cutting, that could roll us four years.
A couple of years, yep.
So, I mean, I think the smartest thing for us to do would be to make, if we're going to do deep cuts in cost savings, you'd want to do that year one. So, and that way, it's not a matter of where we're, you know, I don't want to do the death of a thousand cuts, which is kind of, was history here for a while. If we're going to have to do a deep cut, we do it in year one and then sit in a holding pattern, because I'd rather be able to come back in year three and say, I can start building back up again, as opposed to doing all these small little incremental cuts that are digging into savings.
I would tend to agree. I would hate to be in year two or year three and be in a very dire situation for the town and wishing that we had made deep cuts at the beginning, and we don't have the opportunity to go back and unring that bell. So if we're going to do that, then it probably needs to be done in the first year.
Yeah. It's, difficult conversations need to be had. I'd rather get them out of the way and then try and focus more on, okay, well, how do we rebuild if, you know, this economic downturn isn't as long as we forecast it may be?
All right. This is another first reading.
Do you want me to read down through the?
But that's only two of you. Is there, does anybody else have anything else they want to add to this?
Yeah, Tim, Mike?
I don't have anything to add. I just, I agree with what you said, Kevin and David. We have been down this road before where we had a death by a thousand cuts, and I'd prefer not to take that approach. So we have to make the cuts that make sense, to make the deep cuts in the year one and try to rebuild back. I would take that approach.
How about you, Mr. Bonin?
Well, I'm guessing, if I were to do this agenda, Mr. Chairman, I would probably would have done this as item number one, and item one is this one. Just going back to the bargaining units to reopen contracts, agenda item. I've read our letter to them quickly. I think we really need to hit home the rather extreme measures and discussions that we're having right now, and the expectation of a downturn of not one, two, maybe three years. Those stakes are really high, and I think some of those cost savings can be found with a bargaining unit that understands fully what we're up against.
Tim, I think those are, that's definitely going to be part of the discussion that you would have with the bargaining units. We want to tell them where we are now and where our expectations are will be in the future, and we'll have to bargain accordingly, make suggestions accordingly, and talk to them, and they have a stake in this. They have a hand in this as much as anybody else does. I don't think it's difficult to get across to anyone who's paying attention how bad our economy is right now, and I'm talking statewide, and how much worse it's likely to get in the future. We're not, it's not news to anybody. I think that's, that has to be part of the discussion.
Well, the other part of it is, I mean, regardless of where these conversations sit on an agenda, I mean, they're all under part of the underlying theme, and the biggest one is, is even reopening negotiations with collective bargaining units. It's still, in my mind, it can't really be considered good-faith bargaining, because we still don't know what revenues are. You know what I mean? And it ties directly into this, like, back and forth that we've been having on, well, when are we going to have town meeting? Until I have a clear picture of, you know, of revenues or a better idea as to what's going to come down from the state, as far as I'm concerned, I have no intention of having a town meeting, none, because it's just, it's a waste of our time. So we have bigger things that we need to be worried about. We need to look at doing all of our planning on worst-case scenario, and then if it doesn't happen, then we're all pleasantly surprised, and, but at least we have a failsafe that's sitting in the way of it. But, you know, as for order of appearance on an agenda, I mean, that's, we're all talking about it in the same evening, and there's just as many people tuned in at 7:00 as there is at 7:18. So to all 13 of you, hi.
Don't take it personal, Kevin. I'm just thinking in regards to painting the picture for the millions watching at home.
So, well, I don't know. I got to try and get our Nelson ratings on our selectmen's meetings and see how it is.
You have to look really deep in whatever they publish to find us in there.
Tim, I don't take it personally at all, and I understand your point. It's a matter of trying to prioritize, you know, what's a matter of importance, and the whole thing is, is they're all directly tied to each other, so you'd have to stack rank them all as one. So you got to start somewhere. So do you need me to read the declaration out that you'd had that's attached with this part of it as a first reading, or are we pretty much?
No, I mean, I'm just kind of old school. I do findings of fact to support directives, and so that's all that is, is findings of fact.
Yeah.
That pretty much mirror each other for the two policies, and it really just goes through a lot of things that have already been discussed in these meetings that the board of selectmen have had, with the status of the economy, the unemployment rate, et cetera, so.
Yeah, I agree. So, and I do apologize for going off-topic on the whole town meeting thing, but that's been weighing heavy on.
No, I think it's part of the discussion.
You know, it's just, to me, it's like, there's better things that we can try and be prepping on and, like, really crunching numbers on the budget than to put together a town meeting that is just straight conjecture that we don't have any real clear fact on.
And as luck or whatever force would have it, it would be unfortunate to have our town meeting and just a few days later have some major change for the better or the worse in the economy.
So, not to mention, we still don't know what restrictions are going to be lifted yet, really.
No.
No.
All right. So we don't really need to vote on this. We'd consider this to be also a first reading of three. Does there any more discussion on item number three? Mr. Hughes?
I'm all set.
Mr. Bonin?
I'm fine. Thank you.
So, and for the record, Tim, I still have great admiration for you, sir. I didn't take anything personally. You're still one of my favorite selectmen. And you were a fantastic chair when you were chairman.
Keep going.
And I'm going to name a bench after you.
Don't forget your planning skills, Kevin.
Oh, nobody plans better than Bonin.
Especially regionally. You really shine in that field, you do.
There might be a sequel to that, but Mr. Regional Transportation. Wurda, I see Wurda in your future.
All right. So item number four, consider and vote on the TA contract renewal and possible votes.
Mr. Chairman, I would recuse myself for this discussion.
Understood. Mr. Hughes? I consider you recused. In June, we had met with the TA to review accomplishments relative to the attainment of grant funds and enlargement of revenue opportunities for the town during the course of the fiscal year. Based off of the contract that we'd done, and we just had verbiage that were put in, that we may be able to award a stipend out of the town manager of up to $5,000 paid in a lump sum in the last pay period of the fiscal year, less applicable taxes and retirement deductions, if a majority of the board finds that the town administrator's accomplishments in this area are worthy of the stipend. In essence, what we'd be looking to do is, we have gotten verbiage put together for a contract that's acceptable to town council as well as to our town manager. So it's just a matter of us voting to put it into effect, and I believe the current contract that he has expires on the, is it July 11?
July 17.
It's July 17.
This language in the new contract that we voted on would take effect at the expiration of that contract.
Yeah, you could do it that way. You can set any date you want to. You're the board.
Yeah. So our choices.
In a valid contract period, this would supersede it. What do you want to do?
Yeah, so, I mean, the options that we look at is upon expiration of the current contract, we could make it so it starts at the beginning of the new fiscal year, so it would just be a consensus of the three of us that are still voting on this, as Mr. Hughes has recused himself. So, and I mean, I can see the merit behind the TA's contract coincides with the beginning of the fiscal year to make it kind of clean on an accounting side, but it's all as to what Matt feels most comfortable with and the rest of the board does. So, Timmy, is your remote? Let's start with you. What are your thoughts?
My thoughts, according to Attorney Mazur's paragraph, put a bracket here, I just wonder if we should amend this slightly to recognize the town's fiscal condition. So while the TA may have achieved the accomplishments for this, funding from the town may simply not be there. I don't know if we need that action language in there in any way, shape, or form, or if it's just understood, but I wholeheartedly support recognizing good and strong work.
I would say, Tim, that since the board has the, actually, the obligation under the language to vote on it, that the board, right now, us, whoever's comprising the board, would probably take that into account. I know that if I were voting on this a year, two years from now, it's certainly one of the factors I would take into account whether the town could afford to award a stipend like that. So the language that we have was approved by Attorney Mazur. I'm not really sure I want to tinker with it too much. I think the only, I don't want to say only, but one of the questions to be decided is when this takes effect. I think making it start at the beginning of the fiscal year, July 1, is probably easy and clean and makes it easier on the people who actually have to do the work. That would be my guess. If we're looking for suggestions, that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Do we want to get Gene's opinion on it?
Where would I find, what meeting room is Gene in right now?
Well, she's in the FinCon, but this is, I think, our decision.
Yeah. Well, usually, anything that, I mean, when you think about it, it's like, if the fiscal year starts on the first, but his contract doesn't kick in for the 17th, it's a couple of weeks of, what is it, a pay cycle that she's got to try and deal with of trying to do a true-up or things along those lines.
Right.
I think for future boards, it would make it easier that as we do contract renewals, we have them start and coincide with the beginning of the fiscal year. So I think we'd be setting a precedent that would actually clean it up for future boards to deal with.
And to Tim's point, I just want to point out, Section 4, subsection A, all salary and fringe benefits provided to this agreement and obligations of the parties are subject to annual appropriation through the budget process, except for severance if that ever happens. So it's already, the language that Tim suggested is already in here. You have to have the money to do it.
All right. So, Tim, how do you feel about it starting on the first?
Honestly, I think it's great. I don't really feel any way for or against, just, you know, I know I'm not the one doing the math and cutting the check, so if it's as simple as July 1 of the fiscal year, we're kicking things over, then that's great.
All right.
It would have been better if it started better. I move that we accept the language as presented. We haven't, do you want me to read it into the record?
Yeah, it couldn't hurt. I mean, just the overview of it, like.
Right. The language that we insert into the town administrator's contract is as follows. In June of each year, the board will meet with the town administrator to review the town administrator's accomplishments relative to the attainment of grant funds and enlargement of revenue opportunities for the town during the course of the fiscal year. The board may award a stipend to the town manager of up to $5,000 to be paid in a lump sum in the last pay period of the fiscal year, less applicable taxes and retirement deductions, if a majority of the board finds that the town administrator's accomplishments in this area are worthy of the stipend. That is the language. I would move that we add that to the town administrator's contract and make the contract that we previously approved effective July 1.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Wojcick, is that acceptable to you as the town administrator?
Yes, it is. I'll sign it as soon as you do.
All right. So the motion has been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
On a nine.
Cortez, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye. All right. So did Mr. Hughes return? Or is he just recusing himself for the rest of the meeting?
No, not.
Okay.
All right.
We're not that lucky, huh?
Welcome back, Mike.
I'm here.
So the next act is to approve minutes and possible votes. And that would be for the May 5, 2020 board of selectmen's meeting.
On a.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this? Can I have a roll call vote?
On a nine.
Cortez, aye.
Hughes, aye.
Morris, aye. Which brings us to the highlight of our evening, your report, Mr. Administrator.
A few quick things for you, Mr. Chairman. An update on the meals program, and I'll just read this quick email from Patrice Rousseau. Matt, we are at, as of today, $7,040 in donations and 7,240 meals delivered. We are currently sending out 2,240 meals a week, and this number does change weekly depending on signups. So that is the program that we're running. It's a little bit better than 14 sun butter sandwiches a day, and I don't know how in the world that could ever have happened, but we are taking care of a lot of people who really needed a little bit of help, and glad for it and very proud of all the people. Just great to see people working together for the betterment of the town, and that donation account is humming right along. I mean, it's almost doubled since the last time this board met, because I think our last balance update to you was about $4,000, a little bit shy, $4,000. So thank you very much for the generosity, the community, or helping your fellow citizens get through a tough time. Reopening and all the phases that the governor has announced and all of this, for the lack of better phrase, I think I'll call it mumbo jumbo, because it really is all completely dependent upon facts on the ground. Now, the good news is, maybe it's just jumbo and not mumbo jumbo, because the numbers have been decent over the last week. Number of hospitalizations are down considerably compared to the prior period. And there are lots of things in place. Unfortunately, it just feels like a really fragile equilibrium, like, if the other shoe were to drop, we would go in one direction, and if the rainbow comes out, then we'll go in the other direction. It doesn't feel like we can stay here for too long. We're going to go somewhere. It's either going to get a lot better or a lot worse quickly. Let's hope it gets better. But one of the things that's going to make it better is contact tracing. So this is, this entire system that the state has put together to follow up with people who have been exposed with someone who is known to be COVID-positive, and I just want to reiterate what the governor has said, because it's important. If your phone rings, the caller ID is going to say mass COVID or mass COVID team, and it is somebody who is trying to help you. You need to answer that phone call if you get one, because what they're going to tell you is that you may have been exposed, and they're going to ask you questions, try to verify information they got from the person who tested positive, see how long you were together, what distance from one another, et cetera, et cetera. Close contacts, so people who spend a lot of time exposed to somebody who has tested positive will have to quarantine for 14 days. That's what makes the system work. And the guidance that came out today is that the boards of health with a letter can authorize molecular testing for those people who are quarantining at the outset, and then, should they develop symptoms while they're in their 14-day quarantine. So it's a positive test generates tracing of contacts, phone calls, information gathering. Those people will be tested, and they'll be monitored through the end of their quarantine period, and that's how you eventually isolate people and keep them away from each other that have been exposed. That's a really critical thing. Please answer the phone, get the best information you can if that person reaches out to you. Now, the first line of activity, if you want to call it that, is the town nurse. So it would be a Douglas resident who works for the town and who has been very active in this way all along is most likely the person that would reach you. That would be the Douglas Town Hall, whenever our trunk line shows up on your phone when it rings. So it would either be the town nurse or the COVID team. The anticipation, of course, is that through the large case, the partners. The anticipation, of course, is that really large cases, the partners would be the ones making the calls. I think I've already talked about all the state guidance we get this week. It's ramifications. We read some of it into the minutes. That is ongoing. We have a lot of calls coming up Thursday, especially more budget guidance and more guidance about phasing in. Will Town Hall reopen? Under what set of circumstances? That is a question that would be for the board. I can tell you, my recommendation is we should not be in a hurry to reopen the building. Perhaps it's a phase two marker deadline, not phase one. We have found that people are very compliant with and perhaps getting used to electronic transactions with Town Hall. So people have been paying their taxes online. They've been doing, communicating with staff online. Occasionally, there's, you know, a conference call or Zoom meeting or some other thing to work something out. On very, very rare occasions when somebody has, you know, an original document they don't want to part with, we make an appointment, we greet them at the door, they have a mask on, we have a mask on, we let them in, we have the meeting, we look at the document, we do what we need to do. That's not happening very much at all. And we just don't want to be in a rush to get everything back to normal here because, frankly, you know, we've disinfected the place early on a couple of times after we had a bunch of cases from, in the emergency personnel. We took care of the building. We haven't had anybody fall sick since then. Our most vulnerable people are working from home very actively and productively. Don't want to just rush everybody back into the scene until they're comfortable doing that. Couple of people have come back into the building more frequently now because they're comfortable coming to work, getting their job done here. But I just, we are also, you know, we're getting ready. So plexiglass barriers have been erected in between staff and the public areas so that when people come in looking for a permit or to pay their taxes or whatnot, people are protected on both sides of that glass. And, you know, we do make masks available for people when they come in. The place is loaded with sanitizer for people to clean their hands. I just don't feel like I'm in a real big hurry. A lot of other town administrators are not either. We, I feel even more strongly about some of the closed quarters in some of our other buildings. I don't really think we're ready at all yet for conversation about library or adult social center or even the vestibule of the fire station, you know, people buying permits and asking for, for help with alarm inspections or whatnot. Just don't think we're ready for those closed quarters to be, to do that. By the time the governor gets to phase two, I think at that point, it would make sense to start to, to start to loosen things up. But that's my recommendation to you. And then, that's all I've got. You know, there's a lot of, this is a weird time. We had so many irons in the fire on economic development and there are so many conditions precedent. And the analogy is often used in conversations around Town Hall. It's kind of like the, you know, the guys just used to set up those million dominos, those world record shows that we used to watch when we were kids. You know, that first domino falls and a whole bunch of others are guaranteed to fall or really highly likely to fall. And right now, we're kind of at that point. We've got a couple of parties that just need a little push to, you know, settle their private transactions so that various steps that the town has to take can actually be justified and, you know, we can have a real conversation about it. But we're very close on a lot of things. I can tell you that it's a lot of good work by Mr. Manaric and the Economic Development Commission is getting us some progress. And it's not unusual for this to be the case, that, you know, in my past history, working in an industrial park, you know, if one guy decided he was going to leave his building, then the CEO next door decided she wanted to move her company over there and that would be a big boost for her business and then all these dominos would fall into place and all of a sudden you just, everybody was happy. That's kind of how things really work in the real world. It's unusual for Boeing to stop in and say, yeah, we're going to build a 350 million square foot manufacturing. So it just, it doesn't happen that way. So that's all I have for you this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. So, I guess the only thing is, is I'm really pleased to see how fast the community's coming together with donations under that food program. So, you know, it shows a lot of character in a small town on the way that we're doing things. So, and that was, again, I can't say enough about, once the obstacles were, got removed from the food program and, and Patrice was able to actually get in there with a lot of the lunch ladies that work up there, they've just been a Herculean effort. They've done a great job. So I'm very, very proud of the volunteerism and the, and the way that the community's coming together during this. But that's all I have. I don't know any other open session topics, not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of our agenda. So I'll kind of go around. Mr. Bonin, you have anything additional to add or...
No, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Hughes?
I'm good as well.
Mr. Cortez?
Nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
All right. With all that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Tim's, I could read his lips, but we lost his audio.
So Bonin said aye.
On a nine.
There it is.
Cortez, aye.
Hughes, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye. Thank you very much, guys. Have a good night.
Have a good night, gentlemen.
Take care, gentlemen. Be well.